The regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Madam Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Trangia.
Here.
Councilperson Aversa. E. Park.
Here.
O.
Here.
McMorro.
Here.
N. Park.
Here.
Woo.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Present.
Municipal Clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on the high, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Ben Slatton, who passed the vice at our last meeting. Thank you. We also wish speedy recovery to Queen Eve Arshin, who fell ill last week, and I also want to wish everyone here celebrating Hanukkah, happy Hanukkah. Madam Clerk, could you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement into the record?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. There were several sets of minutes from caucus and regular meetings and special meetings to be reviewed and approved. To have a motion to approve those...
So moved.
They're all, well, actually, we should actually reference them. Can we please reference that, Madam Clerk?
Okay. The minutes of caucus, April 12, 2017, and we will be amending them by adding that Councilwoman Park was present during caucus. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Aversa.
Yes, we're recusing on...
No, we're doing one at a time. May it once and separate.
Just one at a time.
Yeah.
So we're doing it April 12?
April 12, caucus.
Yes.
Actually, we can, we do caucus on regular together.
You can put them all together.
Okay, caucus? April. April. This one, right here. Okay. Aversa? Yes. E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Caucus and regular minutes of November 9, 2017. I need a motion?
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Special meeting minutes of November 27 and December 8. Actually, I'm going to separate those. Special meeting minutes of November 27. I need a motion?
Yes, I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
I recuse.
Thank you. E. Park?
Yes.
Hello?
I wasn't here at the meeting.
I'm sorry, point of order.
Yeah, you're recognized.
A little point, a little late point of order. Mr. Councilman Aversa, are you, were you absent on November 27?
Yes.
So then, if you choose you abstained.
Correct, I was going to say that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Is this the December 8 meeting?
No, November 27.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Special meeting minutes of December 8. I need a motion?
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Um, question. I was, I was on the phone.
You're here, you're here.
Yes.
O.
Abstained.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Abstained.
Okay. Close session. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
On the, on the, on the closed session minutes, could the Clerk let us know if anyone was recused on either of those portions so that they can recuse on that vote? I just want to be clear. Um, Councilpersons Aversa and O recused or stepped out of closed session at the September 13 minutes. So they should recuse on the voting of those minutes. Was anyone, did anyone else recuse on, on the November 27? No, I don't think so. Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to be clear. Recuse. It's a closed session. Recuse.
What do we have to summon a closed session? How do we do that?
You have to recuse on the...
Well, let's just get a opinion from council.
Yeah, I mean, you could recuse on part, I'm sorry, you could recuse on part and vote on the part that you...
That he was, that were given.
That you were given. Or you could just, or you could just, or you could just abstain from them.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. Closed session minutes of September 13. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Councilpersons Aversa?
Abstained.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Abstained.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Closed session minutes of November 27. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Abstained.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Next order is correspondence, Mayor.
Thank you, Senator. Three items of correspondence, one from Eric Bernstein, Esquire's Privilege and Confidential, another from Robert Gallantucci, Esquire. He represents a plaintiff in five litigations against the borough, and he has improperly actually delivered correspondence directly to mayor and council, knowing that we are represented by council, so that's a violation of his own ethical duties, and we'll take care of those. And then there's an item of correspondence on Lauren Eastwood, who's a resident. Next up on the agenda are the payment of claims. Can I have the Finance Committee Chairperson please speak to those? Councilwoman McMorro?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've reviewed the claims and move that, for, excuse me, for between November 10 and December 13, 2017, and I move that they be paid in the amount of $5,069,845.98.
You have a second?
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Okay. Next up on the agenda are department head reports for November 2017. All council members should have received those and reviewed those. If you have any questions, please raise them now. There being no questions, we'll move on. The public portion is next, but I know a lot of people leave before then, so I just want to say a few things. Tomorrow, we are taking delivery of our new fire engine. It's been a long, long time since we've had a new item of equipment. We will be accepting delivery tomorrow. We're paying the balance of the $635,000 purchase price tomorrow with a check for $275,344. It's too cold for a wet down, so we're going to plan something for Memorial Day, a wet down, cookout, and Memorial Day observance. So we'll keep everybody informed about that. And also, I want to thank Councilwoman McMorro and everyone else who helped her with Winter Wonderland. That was Friday night. It was a great success, and I thank you for that.
You're welcome, Mayor, thank you.
We could speak more to that later on in the meeting. Next up is the public portion. Can I have a motion to open the meeting up to the public for comments?
Second.
Fall a favor?
Aye.
So just by way of refresher for the public, you're welcome to come up, make your comments to me, and then we'll, we'll deal with your comments either here or after the meeting. We're changing things a little bit today. I want you to come up and sit down at the table here and speak from that microphone. You will be captured on the same film that, video that we are captured on as well by doing so. And also, just a refresher, you know, often it doesn't go according to plan here, and people are being attacked, so I'd rather see tonight people attacking issues than not people. It works better for everyone, it's more productive. Okay? And if you can't keep your comments to five minutes, that would be appreciated as well. So if you want to be recognized, just please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Lieutenant Keith Wicker from the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. And the reason I'm here is I was reading the agenda, and it stated that we're going to repeal this Jerry Frank ordinance. That just became pretty personal to me, unfortunately, and people can read what the ordinance is about, but to just repeal something and not have a replacement for it makes up, I just don't understand, and I don't understand what the next step is going to be, but this, this benefited me and my family. I'm not going to get upset about things because it was a tough, tough time this last year, and it's unfortunate that I'm here today with this, this situation, because the first time I came, I came back, I'm at a meeting, and we're going to talk about replacing an ordinance that's been there since 1975, and I'll be the last person that may have used it, and God willing, that nobody ever has to use this again, you know? Unfortunately, it's there for all of us, and I would think that we would amend something in the document before you just take it away from, you know, from the borough. So, I mean, I don't know what the next step is for you guys and what anybody's thinking, so that's why I'm here tonight.
Well, thank you for your comments. We welcome you back. We're glad you're well.
Thank you.
We're delighted that you're well, and I congratulate you. I understand today is your 18th anniversary as a sworn police officer.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to have Borough Council just provide you with an answer also, since you're here, so...
So, I think the, the thinking, we've discussed it, the Jerry Frank, Jerry Frank ordinance amongst the council members a couple of times, and of course, we did, the mayor and council did approve that, use of that ordinance for you, and of course, you had a medical condition that qualified, you qualified under the ordinance. I'm sure you're aware that it is a benefit given to police officers under the PBA contract.
Yes.
And this ordinance repeal does not affect that PBA contract.
Okay.
It certainly is a part of the contract now, and I understand that there will be a negotiation going forward for a new contract, but I think that one of the things the mayor and council looked at was that when this was entered back in '71, I think it was, or '75.
Seventy-five.
I forget, I was dealing with something else.
Nineteen seventy-five, yes.
From nineteen seventy-one, another matter. But anyway, you know, the, the financial requirements of the borough are different now than they were then, and the financial responsibilities are different now than they were then, and the instances of use have become more frequent in the last few years. Again, I would think that there could be an amendment, there could be another ordinance. Most of your borough employees are covered by contracts, and that is the appropriate way to provide for it, and there are other different types of programs that the state may offer and the federal government may offer that also would partially step in for this, but you know, it is a benefit that was given by an ordinance in a time that's different now.
Do you want to actually explain the benefit?
Well, the benefit is six months sick leave or, or six months leave.
Paid sick.
Paid sick leave because of a condition that is documented by a doctor's note or whatever.
Which I fell into, I fell into that category.
You fell into that category.
But what my thing is, I understand, you know, if you guys want to come up with a different plan, because maybe somebody did abuse it, and we're not going to mention names or anything, but now I'm the next person who used it, and I, and here I am now defending this, this thing. I just believe that...
Well, I think...
It could be tabled and discussed, and we'll come up with something, an agreement of insurance.
Well, what we, I think the mayor and council are, are already on to a second reading on that, and, and I would not recommend tabling it. You might, if you can repeal, you repeal it or replace it later, but certainly, let me just say this, the, the benefit itself and the way it's done is, does not lend itself to proper budgeting constraints that we have, because when something like that comes up, we haven't, we don't necessarily have that element in a budget, and the, the local finance board rules are becoming much more stringent. For example, they don't want us to approve contracts and term, and separation agreements and, and employment contracts without doing like, almost like a full ordinance, and they're proposing new rules for that. So this is a proactive thing, and it's a way for the borough to properly attempt to assess financial burdens that maybe weren't anticipated.
Okay.
So that's one of the reasons.
If I could just, yeah, I just want to...
They're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mayor. For clarity purposes, we were explained to you that it does not affect what are in contracts right now.
Correct.
Just want to be clear, so it, it has no effect on DTW, police, or anything. It's, we were, it was explained to us it was being taken off the books because it is a negotiated item, and we don't need to have it on the books for no other reason.
But, but I just don't understand why it's being brought up now. You got to understand from my stance, okay? People have used it, and now, now here we are, October got tabled, I wasn't here in November, I come back, and now here we are, and it almost looks like now that Keith used it...
No, not at all. No, no, nothing like that at all.
That's fine.
Not at all.
Unusual ordinance.
It, no, but no, it's not. To tell you the truth, if you look through from town to town, people have unlimited sick time for a year with an...
Sure.
So it does happen. So this is actually a benefit that you can't abuse.
Right, but also...
And I got myself back to work because I knew I had to come back to work on this date.
Right.
Okay? I could have came in early if I could have, but doctors didn't want that.
We greatly appreciate you coming back, and we're glad that you're doing better. You know, when the ordinance was passed, the insurances were different. You know, we, we feel that what, what the ordinance did is also coverable by the insurance programs that state, that the state provides.
Okay, but my question is...
And we could budget that, but it's very difficult to budget an ordinance where you have to pay sick leave for half a year.
Okay, why, why are we doing this now? Why not, why now and not next year or a year after? You know, why, why are we doing this now? That's my, that's my question.
Well, I believe that this is a prudent course for us to take now.
No, but why?
Before our budget season for next year starts.
That could have been something, and I don't know.
Yeah.
Catherine's, Catherine's not here.
Okay.
But, um...
Like I'm saying, this is why this is something that needs maybe to be tabled, right? And then discussed, and then, this is the whole borough, this is a community here that, you know, we all, you know, we all, we all preach how we're all, you know, together.
Okay.
So let's, let's try and table the ordinance, well, maybe we can all come to an agreement, okay? And then, down the road, we'll all come to an agreement and say, listen, this is why it didn't work, but just to take it away, once you know you take it away, you ain't going to give it back. So I think that maybe we can table this.
In my position, though, I have to balance the interests of our employees and also our residents and the taxpayers, so, and the borough's interests as well, so I have to be fiduciary to everyone.
Okay.
And it's...
Understood.
The balance.
But my thing is that now, I'm, I've used it, God willing, God willing, I would never need this again, and you know, if it is, I'm probably not in a good situation. So that's why, to me personally, and anybody who else could ever use this, it, it is very, you got to understand what it did for my family. You know the, the relief it took off my family? To be able to, you got, no, wait, before you, but to, to hit, to the relief that it took off my family, that, okay, I wasn't going to have to go on to a disability or some type of other thing that, I'll get my job back and down to 40% and have to worry about all my bills and everything, like, you know, that's left behind. So I don't understand why we're even bringing this up now.
Okay.
I have a question there. Lieutenant, wouldn't, wouldn't you still have the coverage? You would still have the coverage either way. You would have it absolutely guaranteed.
No, but when the, what, what, what do you mean? I don't understand, like, once it's...
You're not losing it.
It's in your contract.
You're not losing it.
Okay, and when it expires, okay, just hypothetically, whenever a contract expires...
It still, it stays there until everything's agreed.
It's a negotiated item.
You don't lose it.
That's, well, then, 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 you know what? This isn't the way it was...
Well, actually, the...
It shouldn't be repealed, though.
Since, since you've mentioned it, you know, I've extended out to the PBA an invitation to meet in January to start discussions on your contract, so we're waiting to hear from your attorney.
But, all right.
All right.
I thank you for your...
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to ask the PBA to just clear the doorway, it's a safety issue. You can have a seat inside if you wish. Yes.
I'm going to talk to Jake, can I stand?
As you wish.
I wasn't going to speak to Jerry Frank, but I kind of understand who opened my door to show me who's here.
If I keep your name.
Okay. Deborah Sabari, 106 Hollywood Avenue. I wasn't going to speak to Jerry Frank, but I think what the officer is concerned about, I, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be repealed, but that there should be something in its place. For budgeting purposes, I totally understand that you can't predict the unknown. We don't know who's going to get sick or when they're going to get sick, but what you can budget for is a long-term disability insurance-type policy for these officers, and you can put that into your budget. So I think his concern was we're getting rid of one and not replacing it.
What are you having in this place?
So maybe that's something that we can look at. I saw on the agenda that we're approving the kiosk for the park, which I think is great, the Shady Tree Commission. I just wanted to be sure that Yvonne Favara was given credit for that, because she worked very hard on that for quite some time, and, you know, it is, it was her project and her baby, and she should be thanked for that. The, since our last meeting, a paper came out, a newsletter, which was issued by the Republican Party. There were a couple of things in there that I would just like some clarification on. It said that the Public Safety Director position was going to be a part-time position. It also said that that position was created for the easy, because our police chief would be retiring, and it would be an easy transition if we had a Public Safety Director. What I want to understand is, is this something new, and is this actually correct? Are we going to have a Public Safety Director who is only part-time, and is it not considered a permanent position? Is it no longer needed for the lawsuits that have been filed against the town? I'm only asking because the newsletter was put out by the Republican Party. So is there any validity to that? Have we changed the resolution?
Well, you're, you're going to have to speak to the Republican Party about that. This is a comment period for you to comment on anything you want to comment on.
Okay.
I, however, and the governing body are not here for a question and answer session, okay?
Okay, so...
You're welcome to comment.
So you're not aware.
Anything you want.
Okay, that's fine.
We, however, cannot comment on anything we want unless it's in the agenda, or if it's not privileged or confidential or subject to litigation.
Mayor, if you choose not to comment, that's fine. I'm just asking a question. It's something that came across my path, and I'm just asking if the resolution has been changed, if you would, if you don't want to answer me, somebody else has to answer.
We are, we are the governing body here.
Okay.
As we sit here. We may belong to political parties, but we're not here in that capacity. We leave that outside, okay?
Right. I'm, I'm asking you, have there been any changes to that resolution, or does it remain as it was voted on?
Well, I think everything was open.
Okay.
We said it's an ordinance. Yeah.
Okay.
Everything was open.
All right, so, thank you for that answer. Something else that came across was that we are now being sued by Carol, the police chief and the borough are being sued, and what I'd like to know is if the decision that Carol is not conflicted is going to be looked at again, or do you still feel that she has no conflict on voting on these matters?
We, we take conflicts very seriously on a governing body level, and we will evaluate that on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to be heard? I see a hand. Yes.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred, and I will sit. I found it very touching that Lieutenant Wicker appeared before this body and questioned the position of the borough to appeal without replacement the Jerry Frank ordinance. I also found that it's somewhat disingenuous to talk about fiscal savings when the Jerry Frank ordinance, as written, gives the ability and gives the approval for acceptance of an employee's request pursuant to Jerry Frank to the borough as you are sitting as the elected officials. So each of you has the ability to agree or disagree that an employee is entitled to leave. I also wanted to point out that the last three instances in which Jerry Frank was taken, one of them was Lieutenant Wicker, and the other two were Lieutenant Mura. So you as a body authorized Jerry Frank to be used twice, and I don't know of any situation, especially if the contracts that are currently in effect for the borough allow this to be done with impunity, basically, why are you doing this now? It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make financial sense, it doesn't make administrative sense. If you were telling me that you wanted to negotiate this provision in each contract, I would say, fine, it's something to be looked into. There is long-term disability insurance that can be purchased and probably would pave the way to a much more financially beneficial advantage to the borough than the Jerry Frank ordinance, but you're not replacing it with anything, and you are not even effectuating the contracts that are in place, so I'm not exactly sure what you are accomplishing by this. The second comment. I noticed that one of your resolutions, I believe the resolution to investigate the PBA for the intellectual property, is a change from the announcement or decision that was made at a prior meeting because you're substituting the borough labor attorney for the borough attorney, who, as I recall at the last meeting, was authorized to do this investigation. So I'd like to know what has changed that the borough attorney is no longer the person doing this, and that you're using that borough labor attorney whose fee allocation you increase, you almost doubled to $100,000 now, to investigate this further? Is there something new on this? I also take issue with the words in your resolution of voter intimidation. Voter intimidation is a very serious allegation, and I tend to think that we as residents, one of the things that's very sacred to us all in this country is the closed ballot. We go into a voting place, and we vote in private, and we vote in secret, and no one knows how we voted or what made us vote as we did. And that's one of the beauties about being a citizen in our country. And I don't like the implication that anyone, by giving out flyers, be it a policeman, be it a resident, is engaging in voter intimidation. That is not what that term means legally, and that's not what the implication is that we should be giving to the outside world by the resolutions that we're giving. I also wanted to comment on Mrs. McMorro's litigation. On December 1st, she filed a lawsuit. She filed a lawsuit seeking financial damages against the borough. She named other parties, including Chief Chiaffi and Ken John and Jane Does, who, from reading her lawsuit, one could assume are going to be, amongst others, other members of the police department. This lawsuit goes back to actions that she alleges took place in 2009 and go forward to include allegations about improper investigation of internal affairs investigations that she has filed against selected police officers. So I wanna ask you, the borough attorney, to please explain to me as a member of the public, how Mrs. McMorro can vote on police matters at this point in time.
Okay, so that question's been asked and it's been answered?
No, it hasn't been answered, sir. Thank you.
Yes, it's been asked and answered. For the public's sake and not for Miss Geiger's specific sake, I mentioned to you that we are changing the investigation of the inappropriate use by the ECPD, of the ECPD patch and email system, to Labor Council, as it's an employee matter dealing with the seeming intimidation of voters. And I do agree that once you're in a ballot booth, no one should know what you're doing. But before you're getting there, you should also have police officers threatening you to do things or not do things. So that is why we are doing what we're doing, okay? We're making this a better democracy for you, Miss Geiger. You don't have the right to speak from your seat as you're not recognized. Yes.
Debbie Fair, 49 Irving Avenue. I really take issue with that last statement about people being threatened. The police officers did not threaten anyone. They merely distributed flyers, as is done in many elections, and I do believe that you don't have a leg to stand on when you're saying voter intimidation, because if you look at the results of the absentee ballots, they mirror the results in the machines, and most of the-- a vast majority of the absentee ballots were voted way before those last couple of days before the election, when there was a flurry of drop-offs at people's front doors.
That makes it right?
They didn't do anything wrong.
But you'll have an opportunity to swear to that, I assure you.
What do you mean, "I will have an opportunity"?
You just said you know for sure they didn't do it. But you'll have an opportunity to swear to it. Yes.
When did a police officer--
You said you have firsthand knowledge, right?
No, I didn't say that.
You said you know for sure.
They distributed flyers.
Okay.
Are you saying that they knocked on doors and threatened people? Is that what you're saying?
That's what the investigation's all about.
I do not believe that that happened.
Okay.
Secondly, I would like to say that I was quite pleased to hear your remark when you said, "Address the issues and don't attack people," because I was actually going to bring that up myself at this meeting. Because the people that you, Mayor, refer to as the enemies of democracy, which I believe is myself and people that I sit with, and that's an attack on us. You attack us at open public meetings, call us enemies of democracy, and we do not do that to you. When we come up, we address issues, and we take issues with the actions of elected officials and appointed officials only.
Good.
We never address comments that were made by other audience members, as do your supporters sometimes, come up and make comments about things that we commented on. We never do that.
Well, great, then we're getting along really well tonight.
We do follow the rules. We stick to the issues, and the only time we mention an appointed or elected official is in relationship to an issue.
Thank you.
And if we wanna talk about intimidation, after the special meeting last Friday, I was standing, and I was talking, and Mrs. McMorro tried to tell me that the applicant for the planning board, if he had received approval of that application, could have just turned right around and put in low-income housing with the approval of that application. And she said to me, "Trust me." And I said, "Trust you? No." I wouldn't trust her. She said to me, "Watch it. Do you wanna be sued? That's inflammatory." I said, "It is not inflammatory for a resident of this community to not trust an elected official. It is my right. Is there something that I'm missing in the--
You are free to say whatever you--
--in the United States of America that I have to trust every elected official in this country? I don't have the right to not have confidence in one or two of them?
I will be partying to your confidence.
Well, I don't appreciate being threatened by an elected official who told me she would sue me because I don't trust her.
That's the kind of thing that--
Yes, it is what--
That's the kind of thing that you need to settle outside, okay?
No.
I'm here to do--
An elected official--
Okay.
I was not-- I never raised my voice--
Okay, all right, okay. Everyone's very hypersensitive in this town, I know.
No, we're not hypersensitive. We just wanna protect our town.
That's fine.
And quite frankly, I was very happy staying home, never coming to mayor council meetings, but made such a mess of things, I have no choice.
Well, thanks for being here.
I'll come out and give my--
Okay, thank you for sharing your feelings. Okay. Anybody else? Yes. Sure, have a seat.
Maggie. Michael Tels, our homeowner, 9 Churchill Road. I was thinking, when Ms. Owen and Mr. Versa came in 2011, the police force that year had been just 19 officers, and since that time, there have been three whistleblowers on the police force, on the police force. And we're living in a time now where assault, sexual assault, and rape are being taken very seriously. I think we'd all agree rightfully so. So in thinking about that, I stopped and thought to myself, we've had three brave whistleblowers, and instead of celebrating them, seems to me they're being excoriated. I've read the complaints of Shalob, Murrah, and McMorro. Can't really talk about McMorro, but it seems to me that they're all pointing out assault and things of that nature, and we need police, given the climate that we're living in, to accurately report what's going on. So we've had three whistleblowers, and I asked the mayor and council, what is going to be done to honor these three people?
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
David De Gregorio, 165 Charlotte Place, Englewood Cliffs. Detective Wicker spoke before very eloquently, and I was moved, very much moved, that this town distinguishes itself by being a people-centered community. People in front of profits and money. And I think that is what could distinguish this town in the future. Having a heart, especially this time of year, is, in all times of the year, is something that's very, very special. Makes us feel good, makes us sleep well at night, having goodwill for our fellow neighbors, having goodwill for the people that service us in the form of buildings and grounds, police, et cetera. This is so important that employees are treated with respect and are taken care of by the town. It creates a family. It creates camaraderie, and it creates a dedication, and it creates a love. That's what's lacking if you remove that ordinance or if you move on that. You have to think with your heart, not just with logic. It's very, very important. So I appeal to all of you, before you get rid of something, before you modify something, make sure that the people that dedicate their lives, their work lives, to us, to protect us, are taken care of. Don't nickel-and-dime them on-- and I will say, I have to say, and I'm sorry to say, that our mayor has criticized their salary of the policemen, a negotiated salary, on the Curtis Lebow show of all places. I think that was worse than Ebenezer Scrooge. He had a transformation at the end of the story. Will this Ebenezer Scrooge have a transformation? I hope so, because he's got to be haunted. Our mayor has to be haunted. He can't sleep well at night the way he thinks of people that work for this town. He cannot. It is absolutely impossible. You cannot be at peace with yourself. You have contempt for people, horrible contempt for people that dedicate their lives to this town, and you have to stop that, because you're ruining our community. Karen Geiger, a sharp, sharp woman. She has-- she has her ear to the ground. She knows exactly what's going on in town. Person sitting in back of me, if he had listened to her, if you had listened to her, Mr. Mayor, we'd be in a much better position in this town. But instead, you've used terms that have divided you with a lot of reality and a lot of people in this town. Miss Geiger could be a tremendous help to you in helping you govern.
Not--
And, Mr. Perino?
Also.
We would not be in the situation that we're in now if we would respectfully listen to each other, listen to Miss Geiger--
Let's leave it at this. Ignorance is bliss. You should be very happy. I've been called a lot of things. Never Ebenezer Scrooge. Most people who know me know I'm very philanthropic, in fact, and very sensitive to the needs of others. Your five minutes expired.
And I know they expired because you don't like what I said, because it is true.
No, please, you're attacking people. You're not attacking issues. You're attacking--
You don't like the fact that I'm pointing out something critical to you. I'm actually counseling you, Mr. Mayor, and you need counseling. You really do.
Thank you. The door swings. Don't let it hit you on the way out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Take it. I've been called a lot of things, but never Ebenezer Scrooge. In fact, Geiger's husband calls me a lot of things.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead. Okay, we're gonna hear from the next person from this side of the room. You're like Switzerland right there.
Lauren Eastwood, 4 Willow Drive. On tonight's agenda is approval of a two-year contract with the Bergen County Animal Shelter. I would like to point out that the Bergen County Animal Shelter has been the subject of five exposes by the New Jersey Animal Observer as a high-kill shelter and also as failing to abide by the requirement that it hold animals for seven days before killing them. And this shelter will is, and if you sign this contract, will continue to be picking up our animals, and I think the borough may have some liability if a stray from Englewood Cliffs is euthanized before seven days, if you give a contract to someone who's known to do it. They also are a very, very high-kill shelter, and I think that the borough should be looking for alternatives.
So let's do this. I will recommend to the council that-- thank you-- that we table that item for now. As the-- let me finish what I'm saying, please. As the owner of a rescue, I will attest to their loyalty, and let's try to do better if we can.
I just wanna say--
You're recognized. Yes.
I just wanna say, since I'm the liaison to the Board of Health, that Ms. Eastwood did address these issues at some of the meetings, and it was investigated. All the stuff that she provided to us, we investigated, and it seems that whoever made these complaints could never be found. It was one of these, you know, non-people on the internet who, you know, put on these comments. So we've had, you know, great results with the Bergen County Animal Shelter. We had a couple of adoptions this year, so I don't really see any issue.
So if you're the liaison, I would have preferred to hear about it before, so that we could have discussed it.
We had--
You first just tabled, then we could talk about it together as well.
There's anything to talk about, so--
I just wanted to see the reports that you're looking at.
Okay, I could have Diane, who's the head--
Right.
--since I'm just sending it to you, but again, this was addressed. This was addressed. We looked into it. They're an autonomous group. It's not like I have a vote as far as, you know, what they do, and it seems perfectly fine that the Bergen County Animal Shelter to this date has done a great job.
Well, we have a resident with concerns, so let's just take a look at it.
Can you bring that information to the council? I mean, I think, just like what you're saying, can you bring it to all--
Well, I have a-- I have to-- I mean, that's fine, but what happens between, I guess, if we don't adopt this now, who's gonna be the animal shelter? Who's gonna take care of the animals?
Oh, was it approved already?
Yeah, they approved it, so I don't--
Oh, we have the final set.
Uh, yeah, they already approved.
Hold on. It's a shared services agreement.
Okay, nobody reported to me, so-- No, does that want to say something?
I just wanna report that the same issues were brought up last year, and the Board of Health did a comparison of both services, this service and another company that was recommended, and it was unanimous that the Board of Health, for two years in a row, supports the Bergen County Animal Shelter for reasons that they saw many things that were inadequate with another location that was recommended.
Okay, so can we just table it for tonight, and then somebody could give me a court report?
Mayor, I have a question. This expires this year. We're tabled, and police--
I'm not gonna agree to table it if we're not sure--
You speak in the microphone.
Well, this public meeting, you should hear what you're saying.
Be polite. Be polite. That wasn't polite. Okay, that's okay. You can say that if you want. So let's make sure that we're covered. Can we just pass it provisionally?
Here's what I can tell you, Dad. We have a sign-dine meeting, and we can vote on the sign-dine.
January 1st, 7:00 p.m.
Okay, so they're not gonna-- Bergen County's not gonna dump you in the space of two weeks.
No, but if it's at the sign-dine, we're still covered.
And I also think that Catherine, probably, or borough administrators, knows more about this than I do. It's a shared services agreement, and--
She interviewed it.
Yeah, and I'm sure she addressed whatever issue. So my suggestion is we just hold it for two weeks. Mayor, if you-- once Catherine is back, or if you can--
Well, if Alton Park can get all the information, it's okay, as long as it's--
All right, so I'm in favor of tabling it, and--
For the sign-dine.
--doing with it on January 1st. Okay. Okay. Please, thank you. Okay, let's move on.
That's Resolution 235.
Okay, anybody else from the public wishing to be heard? Yes. Yes.
Hey, everyone, Glenn Luciano, 20, Lori Druck. Just for clarification on this Frank ordinance, who is not covered in this borough by contract that this would apply to?
Borough administrator.
Right here.
Borough administrator.
My assistant, Rosemary Webber.
Does the DPW have this in their contract? Yes, okay. So anyone who's not covered by a contract is going to impact.
Well, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out who's not covered by contract. Because in reality, if people are getting six months free sick time, I mean, for an unfortunate circumstance, and if you repeal it tonight, it only affects two people. Everybody else, the police officer that was here, the DPW...
Well, we also have future contract negotiations, and that's playing into this.
That's a different issue.
Right.
I mean, that's not in the ordinance.
But it's related. No, no, but it's related.
Well, it's related, but someone mentioned that if you repealed this, that it automatically impacts someone who's under contract. And in all honesty, just as someone said, you know what? When you take it away, you know how hard it is to take it away from a contract? I'm sure you all do, if you sat here for any length of time.
I understand that.
So, I just wanna understand for myself, really only affects to a handful of non-contractual people.
At this time.
At this time. Okay, I just wanna be sure. I see that you have an ordinance. We went through this long ordinance about REC and issues with the REC, and what can be done, and dog walking, bike riding. I don't see anything in here about enforcement. Who's gonna enforce it?
There are enforcement provisions.
There's nothing in this ordinance. Can you tell me where it is?
Each of the provisions in REC that have a prohibition have the provisions for violation, fines, first offense, second offense.
No, I see that. I'm talking about enforcement. I'm not talking about fines and what the repercussions are. Show me where the enforcement is.
There is an enforcement provision for Board of Health, Borough Police Department, or Borough Superintendent of Public Works.
Where is that in here?
In E4.
E4, okay.
E4. I think that's a couple of other times. And frankly, Police Department always has the ability to enforce ordinances. And whether or not they do is a separate question from their ability to do so.
Does our ordinance for the REC commission also... Does our ordinance for the members of the REC commission have enforcement power as well?
Advisory commission?
I don't know if I'm asking. I know, because I know in other municipalities, people that are on the REC commission have enforcement. And I apologize, but...
We don't have a REC commission. We have an advisory board.
And I apologize, but I will say, none of this is online, and I just got it five minutes ago, so try to read through.
It's only being introduced then.
No, I'm just saying, though, but I only asked, and I apologize for asking the question, because you clearly have it in here, but I didn't see it. And I'm trying to explain that I just picked it up walking in the door.
And let me also say that the only thing, these ordinances are compilation from existing code provisions. So they are already in there. Two of them are under the police regulations. Okay?
The only reason why I'm asking is because when I came here, when the gentleman, the engineer, and we were doing this feasibility study, I asked about all the people that use the field, all the people that use it on off hours. And his words to us was, "We don't know who uses it in off hours." So that's, I'm just trying to tie it together. If we can't do a feasibility study and determine who's using our fields all the time, I don't know how we're gonna enforce it, but that's a, you don't have to reply. I see in here we're allowing people to remove their sidewalks. I know you're not the first ones to do that. We're going to authorize someone to remove their sidewalk. And I'm just wondering, what I see is that, first off, I'd like to know why. If someone has a sidewalk, why are we letting them remove the sidewalk? And this property specifically, has anybody been there to look at that property before you authorized removing that sidewalk?
We had our code, but DPW went over and saw it.
Do you know if the properties on each side of this resident has sidewalks?
There are houses in town that have sidewalks that don't connect to other sidewalks.
That's not, okay.
Right, but I understand what you're asking. And so it's been our policy to permit those people, at their expense, to remove them.
And like I prefaced it with, it has been here before a good majority of you, anyway. I mean, it has been done before. You know what I mean? But it all just baffles me that, you know what? We have people put in sidewalks, because it's dangerous to walk in the street. I see you all the time running in the street. You know what I mean? And it can be dangerous. I mean, even on the side streets, it can be dangerous. And I think that there's sidewalks, I don't know why we're allowing people to remove.
Well, the vast, vast majority of homes don't have sidewalks.
Absolutely, I'm with you on that one. Another thing, I guess we just recently realized that our good corporate neighbors are not such good neighbors. And I'd like to ask all of you, first off, the property on Johnson Ave, behind LG, does LG own that property all the way to Johnson Ave? The back of the LG, where they're at presently?
That's probably the buffer zone, I'm guessing.
But who owns it? Is it municipal property, or is it owned by LG? And the same thing on Floyd, behind 700 and 800. Who owns that property? I see on the borough map, there's certain sections at the end of Egan, close to Chestnut, that the borough owns. But the B2 zone goes all the way to Floyd. Who owns that property?
My understanding is that the owners of 700 and 800 on the Floyd Avenue property...
Why don't we enforce...
Mr. Perino's behind you. Let me ask him, if you don't mind. He's planning for... Do you know, is that correct?
The property behind 800 Silvan Avenue is indeed owned by that same owner. And they're right to write back to Floyd.
And that's the buffer, so...
And that's the 120-foot buffer to Floyd.
Why don't we enforce...
There are, though, a couple of parcels of land that the town owns, I believe, along Floyd, Egan, behind 700 Silvan Avenue, for instance. So it's not necessarily that they own all the land all along Floyd, 700, 800, all the way up to Sage Road. There are some places where the borough owns some individual parcels. But I think the buffer continues from Floyd at Hollywood Avenue heading north towards Sage. I think all of those properties between Floyd and 9W are owned by the corporate boss.
Absolutely. I have the map, and thank you. I understand that. And I know where the borough property is, because there for a while, they were dumping stuff there and elevated the property probably 25 feet from where the drop-off was. But my point being, getting back to our good corporate neighbors, the property looks like crap. The property behind LG has stuff that hangs over into the street by like four feet. Why don't we enforce the property maintenance? You know what? They're not good corporate neighbors. We've been taking this for a while. Behind LG and Sage Road is...
I know what you're talking about.
Downright disgusting. When I pull in to go home that way, and people come to my house who drive down that road, it's totally, can I please, I'm sorry. It's totally disgusting. And I've raised this issue over a year ago about Sage Road. We have on the bend there a guard rail that's been, that someone hit and took out probably two years ago. I don't know why it's not being replaced. Last week, I never knew that the curb strip was now going to be filled with macadam. It was grass before. Since when do we fill in the curb strip with macadam? It's unbelievable. But now we know what our good corporate neighbors are, why don't we start to make them improve their properties? Can I let the front of my yard just go to all hell and not take care of it? Because there's, my property ends five feet in from the curb? It's horrible. There's still political signs in the middle of the woods. They don't even pick up the garbage. But I raised it a year and a half ago. It gets worse every year. We've done nothing. Now maybe because they lit a fire under our butt with this that's going on, and what we really know they wanna do? Please, let's play hardball with them as well. I have one other thing. Okay. I hear grumbling. I'm here looking at the clock. But, and the five, let's be honest with you. Where in the bylaws, this is the first thing just recently, I mean, everybody gets crazy here for some reason, but why, what's now with the five minutes? Really, what's with the five minutes?
Try for five.
Try for five. But, okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, friends.
Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Morfes, 26, John Nigewick Cliff. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I was reading in the record, and actually was surprised that Leonia closes certain streets at certain hours to give their residents peace, quiet, and a way to move up and down their streets. I can only speak for Dillingham and John Street. Is it possible that you guys can follow the same thing Leonia's doing and give us after 30 years or 40 years peace and tranquility?
We could look into it. Leonia's situation is different, because they are really backed up significantly with respect to bridge traffic being rerouted by navigation apps. I know what you're talking about, because people are using your street as a cut-through, which is different.
It's beyond, it's beyond the cut-through. If you went, Mr. Mayor, if you go on John Street and state to your left, I assure you, somebody will speed up to make the turn to make the right. It's a one-way street, it's a one-lane street, not a two-lane street. Somebody is going to get hurt. This is not the first time I'm saying this.
You know, every time you come here, I relay it to our Police Department.
But that's, but obviously, obviously, that's not working.
But I can't, I don't have jurisdiction.
No, 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 you're wrong. And I'll tell you where you're wrong, sir, because I have a letter from the Traffic Department that the council can change those ordinances. You can make no turn on left, you can make no turn on right. And so I have a letter from the Traffic Department. It's up to the council. Forget the Police Department. To me, the Police Department is dead for the past 35 years about that.
Yeah, so you're, that's leading into a state highway, so we have to look into it.
Oh, no, I'll give you the letter. I gave you the letter three times. In 2015, I gave you a letter from the Transportation Department.
And I passed it on, yes.
And what happened?
Well, I was the mayor 2015.
No, I understand, sir.
That was the other guy, over there.
Yeah, I understand, but they didn't wanna do it.
They didn't do it?
But you know what the beauty part is? And I'll be honest with you, it looks to me like it's the same flavor, different wrapping.
Yeah, thank you.
And I, and I don't like to get jerked like that, to be honest with you. Okay? So I'm not interested in what Parisi's administration did or what the other guys did. That's not my interest. My interest is today, I see a town like Leonia listening to their residents, not to the floor of traffic.
Point of water, Mayor, let him give us the entire council, the paperwork he's talking about.
I gave it to you.
Excuse me.
I gave it to you.
Tony, please keep...
If you have it, just send it.
I'll leave it.
There's new members, there are new...
All right, thank you.
I'll leave it again. In 2015, Traffic, the Department of Traffic said that it's up to the council to make a no-turn on red. Not the Police Department, the council. You have that letter. I'll give it to you again.
Tony, drop it off tonight.
I will. I'll drop it off tomorrow. I promise you, I'll drop it off tomorrow. Thank you.
Liz Norton. Oh, yeah. I've called on you, yes.
Lynn Norton, 9 Willow Drive. Just a couple of points and questions. I'd also like to commend Yvonne Barrow for her, the kiosk that's finally gonna be put up. I am commending Yvonne on the wonderful kiosk she put together that's finally gonna be put up. And I'm glad that the council and Chaitree Commission are finally going ahead with it. Next point had to do, and I wasn't at the last meeting, but all of a sudden, you see the candidates, who are sitting up here, by the way, congratulations, win the election, and suddenly we're dealing with intimidation and Jerry Frank. My only question with that is certainly the timing. It kinda looks consistent. Where had the other two candidates gotten in? Would those things have been addressed? Or had the PBA supported somebody else? Would those two have been addressed? And then you have, you're putting off the dog ordinance, the Bergen County Shelter, which, yes, I happen to know something about. The reason it is a kill shelter is because they get the toughest, the worst of the worst. The dogs that you can't place, because they are, they shouldn't be placed. Perhaps as one that bit somebody in the audience at some point in time, those are the dogs that should not be placed. And they do end up being humanely put to sleep, anyway. So it's not like these small shelters necessarily get the tough cases. The Bergen County Animal Shelter always gets them. But you can table that, but you can't look further into Jerry Frank. This is, just doesn't make sense. Not at all. Another question is if, I see Mark isn't here, but perhaps the DPW can focus on the walking path during the winter to make sure that the uneven spots are salted, because unfortunately, they still exist. It's unfortunate that perhaps the DPW, you know, wasn't allocated a few bucks to try to even it out before winter came. But I would ask that that walking path be iced. The other thing is the signs that are still up on Witty Field. When the sign ordinance was passed, it was decided that the signs would come down when there no longer was play on the field, so that those people who like to use the field as a walking area and just look and see green or brown, as the case may be, can see it. So I would ask that the signs be taken down.
Which signs are you referring to?
The, for sale, those publicities, the fundraising signs, whatever.
The ones on the...
You call them. The ones on the... Yeah, those, they were taken down last year. It was agreed to by the Little League, and they are still up. The other issue that we're having on the north side, and whoever lives there probably can attest to it, is our internet from Time Warner Cable is horrendous. It goes down regularly, like between 12 and 3 every afternoon. It's almost consistent. And I called them and had them to my house, and they said that the issue was outside, and they would take care of it. And I have to say, my internet has been better, but the comments were, "It's the entire section, it's the entire north side." And unfortunately, we have no options. We can't use BIOS because it's not there. We can't use Verizon because we're too far from the station. So our only option is Time Warner. So instead of each person having to call piecemeal, since this is a contract signed by the borough, it would be appreciated if the borough, particularly the mayor, would talk to Time Warner and have them go make these corrections throughout the district.
We can look into it.
The third and the fourth. If we get on them, then they will do it.
I'll take that, when somebody else has to change the flight pattern from LaGuardia, because it goes over their house. But that's difficult. I could deal with this one. I'll take care of this.
This is much different.
I assure you.
You signed the contract, Mayor. Therefore, you should be able to address it.
Right, of course, because I'm responsible for everything if I sign a contract, and I'll be up in the telephone pole as well.
Are you not getting this?
I will take care of this.
You have an opportunity to make a difference to the people of the third and fourth districts.
I said I will do it for you, whatever you want.
In sarcastic manner.
That's not true.
Whatever you want. You've got a sense of humor.
You can't win. You can't win.
You can't win. All right, anybody else? Seeing and hearing, oh, yes. I got two, yes.
Mira O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. I thought about this when the gentleman was talking about enforcements of ordinances. I remember when the property, or property maintenance ordinance was originally introduced by the borough. And at that time, the enforcement agents were to be the police and the DPW, because they would be riding around all the time, and they would see... And they would see if a property was not being maintained and report it to the proper officials for summonses. Um, likewise, we have an ordinance regarding cars parked on the street when it snows. And we had a snowstorm this past week, and cars were parked on the street, and they were not moved the whole time of the storm, the whole time there was snow. Uh, the plows had to go around the cars when the police were called to ask about having a car, to get the car removed. The party that called was told, "Why don't you go knock on your neighbor's door and ask them to move the car?" So I think that's very unacceptable. And maybe the police don't realize that they're supposed to be the enforcing agent to remove the cars from the street for the snow so the DPW can plow. Okay? And that was an early, uh, first snowstorm, so hopefully by the next one, which might be tomorrow, uh, they'll have it straightened out.
Okay, thank you. Uh, while you're here, Mrs. O'Shea, uh, you had previously come up here to speak to me about, speak to us, rather, about flat rock, um...
About the deer.
Yeah, the deer and the fencing that they put up. So basically, the issue is, uh, there's been new plantings in the preserve, and, um, there's been a fence put up to keep the deer out of the preserve, which most logical people think deer belong in a preserve. But I've called them, uh, and we're going to have a meeting on Monday regarding that. Uh, because what's happening is the deer are walking our streets, eating all our vegetation, and getting hit by all our cars.
I wouldn't care so much if they were eating my vegetation if they had something to eat. But to see five and seven deer together on Irving Avenue, on Castle Drive, on the northern avenue...
Trying to get back in where they came from.
They, they have no place to go. I mean, you've got, you know, two deer with antlers. You've got a couple of does and a couple of fawns. And it's dangerous to drive any of the streets at night. It's dark. And they, they fenced in ten acres and only left five acres unfenced.
I have a meeting on Monday.
And it's a nature preserve, and deer are part of nature.
Right. I'm meeting with them on Monday.
Okay. And the mayor, the mayor of Englewood was very upset about it also 'cause there was a number of deer car accidents on Woodland and Jones's Road.
Okay, um, yes, I saw a hand back there as well.
You know. And if anybody has any pumpkins left, put them out for the deer. They eat them.
Pumpkins?
Yes.
It's a comment on the deer.
Just hold that door, sir.
Joseph Akarib, three nineteen Castle Drive. I have a little bit to do with the nature preserve. I go down there a lot and talk to the people. The reason they fenced it in is because the deer have eaten all of the natural species inside that fencing. And the invasive species that are taking over is poison ivy. They closed the park in Union County because of the poison ivy. They wanna keep the deer from eating the natural species. And the deer will feed in there, and then they will go out to your yard anyway. They would prefer the meadowlands and off, not the woods. So I just, you're gonna talk to them, of course, you said. But basically, the reason they did it is to protect the natural vegetation.
Thank you, that's helpful. Uh, no. Okay, that's fine. I have to enforce the rule, which is everybody gets to speak once. No, everybody has to speak once, and, and we move on. Anybody else? Yes.
Gloria's surrounded.
Hi. Maria Valari, forty-five Dane Drive. You know, I'm sitting here very quietly as most of the side of the room has been. And I'm listening to people coming up here continuously attacking, attacking, attacking. We need to be nice to each other. We need to say nice things. And all I hear is horrible, horrible things coming out of some of these people. I'm not gonna say who and what. Uh, but how can you, in one breath, in one breath, say, "Oh, you know, these people, they name names, and they call names, and they do whatever." And then you come up here and do exactly that. I, I, it's like an oxymoron. How can you, how can you, you know, get both things and, and feel like you're the better people in this room? We're all good people. We are all neighbors. We all live in this town. We've had children that have gone to school together, that got along, that we were friends. And this is ridiculous, and it has to stop. It's a different administration. Be respectful. Be respectful of what they are doing up there. And if you don't agree, say your piece. Sit down without name-calling. I don't understand what is going on here. Uh, I wanted to, I wanted to say something about, uh, Yvonne. I, I know that Yvonne has donated lots of her time uh, to the Cheatrie Committee, and that's really wonderful. But the kiosk was not just her idea. There are a lot of people that worked on that kiosk. I'm not one of them. I'm not trying to say that I was involved in that. But how about we thank all the people that were involved in the kiosk? And not just Yvonne. I don't understand what this Yvonne thing is. There's, there's Amy Chaffee. There's, uh, there's, uh, Moira Vell. There's a lot of people that were involved in whatever they did on the Cheatrie Committee. So how about we just thank them all? Uh, one more thing. Um, animal shelter. I was on the Board of Health. I understand animal shelter. I don't know what the connection is between the, the company that they choose and... But it, it was obvious from a long time ago that that's what they wanted. What I wanna say about this animal shelter is they do kill a lot of animals. And just because a dog bites you, and I've been bitten by a dog, I don't want the dog be put to death, okay? That does not justify killing animals. If a cat scratches you, it does not deserve to die. Uh, I, I just don't understand why we need to stay with a company that kills a lot of animals. And that's all I wanna say.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Got a motion to close the conference? Uh, the citizens, okay. All right, there's one more, uh, public comment from a council member who is now changing roles into her citizenship role.
I guess so.
We've done it, we've done it before.
You don't lose your rights to speak.
Well, I'd like to hear from the borough attorney whether you could do that, so I know what my rights are.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a problem. It's unusual, but I don't think it's a problem. There's no rule.
May I honorate me? I didn't know I committed anything wrong.
I'm not sure you need exoneration to speak.
Thank you. I'm a resident, I don't lose my rights.
I think so, then maybe we got to ask him a few questions. Go ahead.
Thank you. And, uh, for the record, Mr. Semerow and many borough attorneys before you have placed on the record that any council member, former mayor Parisi is sitting in the audience, may step off the dais at any time during public comment and make a public comment if they so choose to. I'm choosing to step off the dais and make the public comment.
Yeah, I don't think there's any...
I don't lose my rights as a citizen. Thank you. Um, Ms. Geiger made several misrepresentations about me, about the laws that I filed and about what I am seeking. Ms. Fair also made misrepresentations about me. With the numerous complaints filed by various individuals and the improper conduct by individuals and the employee of the borough, I was compelled to hire an attorney and file a complaint to vindicate my rights as a citizen of this borough. My goal is to ensure that the rights afforded by the laws of our state to all of our citizens are protected and to prevent wrongful conduct against any of our borough's citizens in the future. I am hopeful that by filing the complaint, it will compel changes, changes in furtherance of these goals. Thank you.
All right, thanks, thank... Anybody else in the public wishing to be heard? All right, seeing and hearing, no one? Got a motion to close the public portion, please?
Second.
One favor.
Bye.
Okay. Let's, uh, deal with the resolutions that we have listed next. Yes.
I just have a point of order. Um, I just want to, before we start voting on, on the resolutions, I, I need to speak on, um, some of the things that I heard in regards to the Jerry Frank ordinance. Um...
Do you wanna do that now, or when we do the ordinance?
I would like to do it now. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, while I respect what the intent was of, um, wanting to be, to, to better... It's fine, it's true, I'm gonna speak now. Um, to better understand fiscally where we are, um, in regards to budgeting purposes. I do happen to agree with certain members of the public that spoke. And, um, also in listening to Lieutenant Wicker, uh, it, the intent of doing this was never to make anyone feel unsure or not make them feel that they didn't have a protection. And I think we can all agree with that. Um, I would, uh, in listening to them, it's in their contracts anyway. I understand that. It's a negotiated item, um, for everyone except for the three members. And I, I think that that's a very important, um, piece of the puzzle, to ensure their confidence in us as employers that we do have a plan. And without having that plan, I think that we do need to table this until, um, until we have a, have a plan. And, um, whether it's, and we can look into that right away and, and find out about disability insurance or however that works. But I, um, I don't know if I have a second from...
I, I second that.
Is there a motion being taken?
I made the motion.
Are you taking a motion, motions at this time?
I made a motion to table it, okay.
We can go now, right?
Fine. I, I make a motion to table it to ensure that the, um, confidence of the, our employees, both, not just, I know everybody just keeps mentioning police. DPW are also are very valued employees, and we have a lot of valued employees. So, um, to, to ensure their confidence that, and this one, I take a great offense, Ms. Norton, to your comparison about any intent and what you compared it to. That was highly offensive. And, um, I can only speak for myself, but that, that's never anything that ever entered into anybody's mind. Um, but, and I thank you, Mayor, for, for trying to always look at the fiscally responsible side of it. I know, Mr. Luciano, we've been agreed with that part of it. But I, I think having that, um, and I don't know anything about disability insurance or how it works, but I think if we have a secondary, that, that plan, it'll just make everybody feel better and understand, and that it'll, it'll be a win-win for everybody. So I heard I got a second, right, Liam?
Yeah, a second. Y'all could vote on it now if you want.
Two seconds, please.
I think one.
I did.
Ellen.
Ellen did as well.
Okay. It was a tie.
That wrote down Ellen. Uh, councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Okay. Motion, uh, is tabled.
Okay, let's, let's get to the resolutions. Um, I'd like the borough clerk to read into the record the resolution that you're voting on. Um, and, and let's, let's go through it that way. We're tabling number two thirty-five.
We'll get after books.
No, okay, it's my agenda, pull it.
You still have to, you have to...
I just pull it.
Take them off. You have to take them off.
Why?
You're gonna make a motion to table two thirty-five?
It's my agenda.
That doesn't work anyway.
Can we make a motion to table? To postpone it to the signed eye meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all. No, you need to do that, man.
There you go. You got what?
I'm sorry?
It's fine, but I don't, I think I have the ability to do it either way.
I don't have it.
No, I don't. You need to, you have to.
All right, that's right. All right.
All right. Resolution two-two-eight. Appoint building inspector and subcode official. Motion? So moved. Point of order, please?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, you recognize it.
Um, I just, I'm curious to, um, I haven't met the building official, and the last building official... Sorry. Um, you know, we hired, um, being on the Personnel Committee. Um, so was there an interview set?
Catherine conducted everything.
Okay.
Yeah. She's not here, unfortunately, to report, but just her, her update to me was, you know, I did happen to ask her, um...
So there was no, she interviewed everyone?
Everyone along.
She picked the best cattle dinner?
She did that.
Okay.
All right, can we have a vote?
Motion, please.
So move.
Second. Counsel persons of versa?
Is she replacing, if not, you're in addition to?
Yes.
He's replacing.
Okay, so I'll make sure, thank you. Yes, I vote that.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
W.
Yes.
229.
And point of order, Mayor?
Yes, you recognize me.
Catherine can, Catherine can give everybody the update, but the hours were excellent, how she negotiated it. I mean, we can ask her for that update.
Okay. I think it's in the resolution.
Oh, it is. I'm sorry about that.
I wrote the, yeah. The hours are in there?
Okay.
Everything is in there.
229.
Authorized purchase of ammunition utilizing state contract. Motion?
So move.
Second. Of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
W.
Yes.
230, authorized installation of tree kiosk at Witty Fields.
...by Emory to that we shouldn't vote on it. And she said, "That we told us." Am I incorrect?
Well, you're, you're, my position on conflicts of interest is always that you need to evaluate the circumstance and make the decision. And you chose just two weeks ago or three weeks ago when we first did this.
Right.
You chose to recuse. I didn't say you have to recuse.
You strongly suggested that.
Oh, I, and I still strongly suggest.
But I, I didn't agree with you then.
Okay.
I didn't. I was in your place and I said, "I don't agree. That doesn't make any sense to me." So I had to...
No, actually, you didn't say that. I was there. That's not what you said.
You weren't there.
No, you weren't there. We were speaking in the hallway.
We talked about it.
Point of order. Point of order. I like to speak after Ed. Yeah, and just listen.
I'm just telling you what I called the DLGS, and that's what I was told. In fact, if it was just an endorsement and that's the reason that I'm supposed to be recusing, there's no reason for that.
Oh, well, it's not just an endorsement. There was clear coordination between your campaign and the PBA that may have resulted in voter intimidation. Okay? That is the issue.
That's the allegation.
That's the issue, and that's what the investigation is for. So, Ed, you should want this investigation to happen so you could be cleared. Or not.
And from my perspective, the point was that it was a unanimous vote on all members of the PBA. I am using the microphone. Okay?
You can't hear her because you're speaking.
One of the things that... One of the things that we discussed was that it was a unanimous vote as well. And we also discussed that it was, it was during this election in which you and Gloria were elected, and the police used the, the, the PBA used the police patch and the name of the police department. So...
I understand that.
Here's the thing. Ultimately, ultimately, if you feel that you do not have a conflict of interest, you are voting with that in mind. That's the way it goes.
What was the unanimous vote?
Yeah, well, I lost you on that one.
The, the PBA endorsed you unanimously.
Okay, so, you said unanimous vote.
That, I guess that's where I'm confused, Emory. What, so their endorsement, how does that, I mean, anyone endorse anybody? I'm confused, so confused by that. That's why I called DLGS.
It's not about the endorsement, it's the way they did it.
Not the endorsement.
It's the way they did it, okay? Let's be very clear. When PBAs, when PBAs endorse, they don't use the Borough's Patch, Borough's email system, and, and on and off duty officers to do the endorsing. Okay? And that's what we suspect happened here, and that's improper. Okay? I don't care what happened in this town before I was mayor. This happened when I am mayor, and we're going to deal with it.
Ed, the conflict, when, when you look at conflict of interest laws, what you look at is whether or not there is a financial or other benefit that is implied in the vote. The implication here is the PBA is, the entire PBA is implicated in this, in this resolution, and you were endorsed by the entire PBA.
Right.
So the implication is that it's not an objective vote. Do you understand? Conflict of interest.
Okay. Are you done?
I'm done.
So, so, and, you know, again, I prefer to discuss this privately.
Yeah, Councilwoman O.
Point of order.
In any event, Councilwoman O, what would you like to say?
Okay. I have couple things to say. Emory, your duty as legal counsel is to the borough. You represent all of us here.
Yes.
Okay? Why is it that I feel like you're biased with your legal opinions? When it comes to conflicts, okay, you had mentioned if it appears to be improper, we should recuse. Why is it that you recommend Ed and I to recuse on police matters? Just because the, let me finish. Just because the police endorsed us? Why is it that you don't feel that Council President should recuse when in fact she's suing the police and she's suing the town? How is that different?
Yes, I understand.
So, you have mentioned that if there's any financial or other benefits, right?
You're creating a false narrative, though. The narrative is actually, I endorsed you.
Excuse me, I have the floor. Just because you're the mayor, you cannot interrupt people. Excuse me, stop being rude.
It's still my meeting.
Stop being rude.
You're, you're creating a false narrative.
That's what you like to say, but you know it's not true.
It is absolutely true.
So, excuse me.
It is true. It is absolutely true.
You know what? This is what we have to deal with. We have the reporter here.
She keeps being repetitive.
This is what we have to deal with at every single meeting.
Okay.
Our mayor, our mayor sets the tone in this room for everybody else.
You want to portray that to everyone.
Yeah, so, um...
And that's why we have the amount of...
You know what, Emory? You have your license underlined, okay? You have your duty to the entire board here, not just the mayor, not just this mayor, not just this mayor's supporter.
Do not attack Emory. She's doing a very fine job.
All right, so, so, so he, and I think I discussed this within privately as well. The point about this is it's a little bit too close for comfort. I did not tell you you have to recuse from every police matter or every matter involving the PBA. I did not. No, I did not tell you that. And I also did, did not tell you, I told you, when you made the vote, when, when you made the recusal a few weeks ago, it was within days of the election, correct? And that's what I said. Well, this is, this just happened.
You know what, Emory?
And this just being important. Let me finish answering the other side of the equation. I do the same thing with Council President McMorro. For example, in the PSD ordinance, the position was that it is general legislation, not targeted or dealing with one particular person, not dealing with Chief Chiapi who has sued her and now who she has sued. She's not suing anyone in the police department. She's suing Chief Chiapi. In the other case, she's being sued by Chief Chiapi. Those are, those are different scenarios. A PSD ordinance is a different scenario. Voting on a health benefit is a different scenario. Enacting a police ordinance is a different scenario. All I am saying to both of you is, if you are of the opinion that you do not have a conflict of interest on this resolution at this time, then so vote. Then vote. If you feel that you are clear of the conflict of interest, that is your choice. Ultimately, each person must make the decision based upon the facts and circumstances before you.
You know what?
And that's not different from anything I've ever said on conflict of interest. And you got a memo from me not too long ago saying the same thing.
Okay, you want to talk about the memo?
No, we don't want to talk about the memo.
Okay. All right, you don't want to talk about the memo. Okay, I was very, I was very disappointed with your memo, by the way.
You didn't call it up. Why didn't you just...
I wanted to. I, I was waiting for you to call me when I got that email about either you or, I think it was Catherine, that was going to call everybody for a special meeting, but anyway.
Wait, she sent you a memo?
Okay, um...
Court order. She sent you a memo and you're waiting for her to call you to ask you questions?
No. Excuse me, Mayor. Okay, all right, you know what?
Just have this vote.
No, I, I, I have the floor right now. I'm not done.
It's my meeting.
No, I'm not done. It's not...
What other issues do you have?
It's not your meeting.
What other issues do you have? Just ask, trying to get through the meetings. We're getting redundant and repetitive here. What other issues do you have?
And the, the one clarification that I wanted to make to Emory's statement was, at the last meeting, when you had highly recommended that both Ed and I recuse on police matters...
On the PBA matter.
On the, you had mentioned, if my memory serves me right, you had said on all the police matters.
No, she never said that.
How do you know that? Because you were part of the discussion. We were in the whole...
Okay.
But anyway.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Here's the thing.
Anyway.
I have told you, and I told...
Point of order for all of you.
Well, no, no, no. Do not recognize. We're not recognized. You're not recognized. You're cutting people off. Emory had the floor.
Ma'am, I just, look, this is something that I, I told everyone on this council. Please call me whenever you feel like calling me. There is no prohibition about you calling me. If there is an issue that I feel needs to be dealt with by the council as a whole or by the Borough Administrator, I'll send you back there. You can pick up the phone and call me. This is something that, conflict of interest is a, is a sensitive matter. It is not necessarily something that we have to discuss in public. In addition, in addition, you have privacy rights with respect to what you do, with respect to recusing or not recusing. It would have been greatly appreciated that I get a phone call from you guys, that you've changed your position and we can hash it out. It's okay, we're doing it now. My position has not changed. If you believe that you do not have a conflict of interest on this resolution at this time, then do not refuse. If you think that there is a problem, or there is an issue, or maybe, or it's not so clear, or it's too close for comfort, or it's too close in time, then take that under consideration. I always recommend a conservative approach, but it is ultimately your individual decision. The only time the Borough Attorney should sit there and say you have a conflict of interest is if you have some kind of known financial interest right there in front of you. Like the tax appeal stuff, you know, the person, they're getting money and you don't vote. You recuse.
So what is, what is my financial gain?
It's, it's...
Why, why do I...
You don't have a financial gain. You have a different type of gain.
There was a benefit.
Okay, so...
And rest assured...
And, and you know what? I'm done.
You know what, Mr. Mayor? You don't like to let other people interrupt you, please? I have the floor now. Let me finish.
I do not agree with the fact that you don't have...
Um, excuse me. So, I would like to get an independent legal opinion on this matter because I do not have faith in my Borough Attorney for her advice on the conflict issue with the PBA police, and I would like to carry this. And in the meantime, I would like to get an independent legal advice.
That's not how it works. That's not how it works. You, you...
Let him. Let him. Please, please, walk out of the room, sir.
I make a motion to, I make a motion to carry this resolution.
Excuse, excuse me. Please go out of the room.
I make a motion to carry this resolution.
Where, where, where were we on this? Were we on a motion?
We were having discussion. We're not finished.
Did we have a motion yet?
Well, there is a motion on the floor. Excuse me, I've been waiting to ask the question, and I didn't have the floor.
You're next.
Well, there is a motion on the floor.
Excuse me, excuse me, she had the floor next. Is that okay with you? Is that all right? Please go ahead.
So, Ed, after the motion...
No, it was before. He told me the way.
No, it was before.
He told me the way.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, I have a couple of questions because, um, at this point, uh, I'm very confused by what Councilwoman O is saying. Um, first of all, A, are we allowed to get, I just want to know procedure, are we allowed to get our own legal opinions? And then if we rely on outside legal opinions by an outside attorney and then get sued, is the Borough covered if we get sued when relied on an outside opinion from another attorney? That's, that's a question for you, Emory.
Well, that's, that wasn't his attorney.
I, I don't...
That wasn't my attorney.
I'm asking, I don't see any... Councilwoman O made a statement that she's going to get...
That she doesn't have confidence in my services. I understand.
Right, but, but...
Okay, so, listen, we can start from the beginning.
Yes, of course.
And if, in fact, Ed indicates he's talked to someone at DLGS, I don't know if it's the DAG that would be assigned to this, but I can write a memo with the facts and send it up to the DA, the DLGS who consults with their DAG. If you don't want to do that, Mayor, put it for a table.
No, I mean emotionally, there's emotion.
That's a question.
My issue is, is they need to...
The issue is that we need to find out what happened during our election. And we're not going to find out if we keep delaying, procrastinating, creating false narratives, and going to the state with a half-baked excuse and having some kind of blessing from them.
Accusation.
No one has seen anything in writing, Ed, so I, you know...
What does Councilwoman Wolf say? The police commissioner?
There's something in writing, right?
I am of the mind that we move forward.
I think we should carry it. I made a motion to carry.
And Ed, Ed, there's a motion on the... Councilwoman, Councilwoman O, you, you know, you, you had the floor for so long and you will not let anyone else speak, and you're really being rude. I know, look to the back and laugh, that's what you do every time. Please.
Okay, all right. All right. Councilwoman Wolf...
Well, I think we can have a vote on the carry and then, and then take it from there and see if, uh...
We, we need to get this done.
There is a motion.
Make the motion.
Investigation going.
On the carry.
I don't want to carry it.
So, I made the motion, Ed second.
Councilperson Deversa?
Yes, to carry.
E Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
No.
Ann Park?
No.
Who?
No.
Mayor, it's a tie?
No.
Okay, point of order, Mayor.
Yes.
Can I just get a clarification on my question without all the other distractions?
I'm independent counsel.
Well, first of all...
I have nothing to do with what we're doing.
That's right, but I'm saying to even allow that to come into play legally for the Borough...
It's not in play, it's in play in their minds, but it's not in...
But I'm saying we wouldn't be covered, I don't believe, would we?
Covered by what?
By, if we got sued.
Carol Brakers.
Thank you. If she's relying on, she's relying on a, an opinion...
But we're not relying on anything.
I'm asking a question, please.
No, I think, Carol, you're putting a cart before the horse. She's just saying we're going to, uh, basically get two opinions so we can decide if they're conflicting, which ones to follow, but the point is, there's only one right now.
We, we want to...
We're not relying on anything right now.
No, listen, hold on a second. Anybody just, I want, I want to move closer to finding out what happened, and by hiring other attorneys, not going to get any closer because it gets us away from the actual issue.
Yes or no? Do Councilwoman O, does Councilwoman O and Councilwoman Deversa have a conflict, in your opinion, Emory?
In my opinion, I believe they do.
Okay, then they need to recuse, and if they, I mean, that's it.
They, they have, they have now heard the issue, they know our opinion, and we're going to vote. And the vote is going to be on whether or not we're authorizing an action on use of the Borough intellectual property by ECPD PBA during the election.
This is only for an investigation, correct?
Can I have a motion?
This, this resolution is for a, is only for an investigation.
It includes action. Action.
No.
It says action.
Action, we're not coming back for this, so...
No, I know, but authorizing action regarding the...
Read the resolution.
Such reasonable and necessary action as the...
To find out what happened, that's all it's saying.
To determine and address the, to determine and address the issues presented by the use and appropriation of the Borough's Police Patch and the name of the Borough's Police Department during the campaign, campaign and/or election that was completed on November 7th. They then now therefore...
Yeah, I just want to make one comment. Um, I think the agenda, if we can just remove, it's different from the actual resolution. So, you know, we're going to make an investigation into any, anyone that was involved in it. And it, there it says ECPD PBA.
Mm-hmm.
In the agenda, on the resolution.
It is, it is meant to be ECPD, uh, ECP, ECPBA. That's correct. So the resolution doesn't actually say that.
Right.
So you need to amend the title to fit what Lizette has on the agenda.
So this is to authorize an investigation?
Yes.
Okay.
And further action.
But you're not, you're not...
You're hiring the Borough Labor Attorney.
You're going to amend it now?
Yes, we can.
It's a resolution, you can do anything. Well, I'm going to vote on an investigation. I'm not voting on anything more than that. I'm going to be clear. I can't.
I know.
I can't. The wording on this is all off...
No, it's, the wording's not off. It's the, it's the PBA that did it, so that's, that's what we're looking at.
We're, we're voting on an investigation as...
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, just want to clarify, we're voting on an investigation as it's stated in this resolution, correct?
Stated in the investigation.
Well, we're being clear, because we're voting.
Right.
Okay, so, if it's got to be amended, it's going to be amended, but we're going to be clear on what we're voting on.
I made a motion to amend it.
Well, I'm just, I, I...
You know what? I made a motion to carry this.
Stop it, Gloria.
You can't keep interrupting. We can't, we, we're concentrating.
We don't even know what we're voting on.
Yeah, I know. If there was ever a protest, it's too much.
If it's a decision or action, let's be clear here. Want another vote?
You should be recused, so, yeah.
Emory, fix the resolution.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going, I'm making a motion, just to... Well, he made the motion.
Carol, wait a minute. Carol, we're fixing it.
Yeah, read the title, read the title of the resolution exactly as you have it on the agenda. Exactly as you have it on the agenda.
Exactly correct, yes. That's why I asked the question.
It's an investigation, Emory. It's just an investigation.
We're amending it. He made a motion to amend that to say investigation.
I'm amending the agenda.
He's doing...
Listen, authorize no action.
Yeah.
Authorizing investigation.
That's right. You want to do it? I'm playing the cabinet. Excuse me. He made a motion.
I didn't hear the motion.
No, stop. She's working.
No, because the other side is being so ridiculous, Mayor, and I just can't understand how this is allowed to go on.
Read the title. Okay, you have a motion.
Well, we don't know what, what do we, uh, I'm sorry, are we changing the name, the title?
The title of the resolution is as it appears in the agenda.
Okay.
254, authorize action on use of Borough intellectual property by ECPD PBA during election. And then go back to the actual resolution and, and read it as having that title in it. Very simple, folks.
Wasn't there a motion by...
Councilwoman wants the amendment to say...
Investigation.
Authorizing investigation.
There was a motion.
Not action.
And I second that motion.
I seconded it already.
Yeah, all right. So, all right, stop. Instead of action, it's going to be investigation.
Correct, correct, yes.
Now you got it right.
Correct.
Because action also means investigation in my mind. That's what it means.
No, it could be more than, it's just investig...
Well, that's what my interpretation was, which is what I wanted to be clear on.
I will read it. The "now therefore be resolved" part. Now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, Bergen County, New Jersey, that the Borough Labor Attorney's Office is authorized to undertake, undertake such reasonable and necessary investigation to address the issues presented by the wrongful use and appropriation of the Borough's Police Act and the name of the Borough's Police Department during the campaign and/or election that was completed on November 7th.
Okay, but also the second paragraph, whereas the Borough desires to protect its intellectual property and to take action, that needs to be changed to investigation as well.
Actually, into an investigation.
Take action and is fine, but now therefore be resolved is the description of the action. That's an investigation.
All right. Got a motion?
So it says...
Summer.
I seconded it. I just take such reasonable and necessary...
Investigation.
Investigation. Okay, and up here, are you changing the title? Authorizing investigation.
All right.
This is an investigation.
I'll tie the vote.
Okay. Councilperson Deversa?
Stand.
E Park?
No. Again, I want to say that you're putting a cart before the horse. O?
I want to vote, uh, no, but, um, I don't feel comfortable after listening to the Borough Attorney, so I'm, I'm going to say I am still going to request for an independent, uh...
What is your vote?
Legal opinion.
What is your vote?
I'm going to have to abstain on this one, but I would like an independent...
That's a separate issue.
Legal opinion.
That's a separate issue. We'll deal with that separately.
McMorro? This is simply for an investigation. I want to be clear, can I?
Correct.
Okay, then, yes.
But why do we have to pay a Labor Attorney? Why can't, again, why can't we just have the Borough Attorney investigate?
I'm not in that...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we're voting.
I'm sorry, the Minister here.
We're voting. You had the luxury of voting in peace and quiet.
E Park?
Yes.
You just want to spend everybody's money.
Um, exactly the way the resolution is written, um, as it currently stands, um, I'm voting yes.
Okay, three yeses.
Okay. Ordinance first reading 17-16, ordinance to add provisions for recreation program fees, hours of operation, and limitation of certain activities at recreation facilities and other provisions.
Motion? Motion?
Second.
Councilperson Ed Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Did anybody want to share a committee report? If so, just state your name and your committee. Councilman Ed Versa?
I just, lighting's great, since the tree lighting happened and Carol did a great job. I want to say it was a really nice event. I was there for about an hour and a half, I had a commitment to go to, it was a lot of fun. I did, I did really well. I think you had a nice turnout and I'm glad to see you carried it on.
Thank you.
Oh, Catherine and Richard and you'll thank everybody.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
Ellen Park, Board of Health Liaison. I also first want to say, Carol, great job. The ice skating was a big hit with my kids. And I was pretty impressed that it wasn't, I was nervous that it was going to be real ice, but I was pretty impressed that it wasn't.
Yes.
So that was good. And we all had fun, and again, like you said, please thank Richard and Catherine and everybody else. I want to also mention that on twelve-one, the Board of Health President Diane Clark, along with several members of the board, was in attendance at the awards ceremony in South Brunswick, when our registered environmental health specialist, Jen Bay, won a State of New Jersey Local Board of Health Association Award. This award is given to registered environmental health specialists whose performance and interaction with the community is outstanding. Our Board of Health sent a letter nominating Jen for the superb job she's done for our town. It is truly an honor not only for Jen, but for all of us in Englewood Cliffs. The Englewood Cliffs Board of Health once again sponsored a rabies clinic which was open and free to all residents of our town, as well as to anyone in the surrounding towns. We are very fortunate to have our local veterinarians, Dr. Lisa Ann Antanasi and Dr. Rachel Park, along with their staff, provide their volunteer services to us. They also bring boxes filled with goodies for all the pet patients. That same day, the huge pet adoption truck from the Bergen County Animal Shelter in Teterboro was parked in the community building parking lot with many kittens and dogs for adoption. In September, we sponsored a flu clinic for the convenience of our residents, and as part of the service provided by the Health Awareness Regional Program called HARP of Hackensack University Medical Center. At our final meeting on twenty seventeen, on November thirteen, I'm sorry, on November thirteen, twenty seventeen, we presented a plaque to the Englewood Cliffs veterinary doctors and their staff. Dr. Antanasi came to the meeting to accept the award. That's it. That's the end of my year and...
Anybody else have a report?
My committee is transportation, I don't have anything to report from the committee, but I do also want to thank the Recreation Committee and also Carol for doing a great job. I thought it was fun. The only thing that I'd like to mention for the future events, I'd like to be, you know, noticed, just as the residents. I didn't know about this event until the day before, maybe two days before, when one of the residents asked me about the event, and I had no idea that it was scheduled for that weekend. So, you know, if we could just have a little courtesy as well, I would appreciate that. The other thing is, I've been asking the mayor and the borough clerk about the date for a reorg, and I'm just hearing today, when I sat down, that maybe January first? So when was that decided? Because I did not get the notice for that either.
It was on the caucus agenda. You were not caucus.
No, I was not, but when was that date confirmed or scheduled? Because the last email that I got from the mayor was, you know, we'll let you know, that was about a week ago.
It was scheduled today.
And the last thing that I want to say is, I know we had our RFQ, you know, is in, is there going to be any meetings scheduled to discuss appointments? Mayor?
Any comments that you have, just call me with them.
Okay.
I'm not scheduling a meeting with the entire council because it's not going to work.
No, I understand that, so just call you or email.
Just feel free to call me. I'm around.
Okay.
It'll be our first phone call this year.
That's it.
Councilwoman McMorro?
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, first of all, Winter Wonderland, thank you all for recognizing the Winter Wonderland. For those of you that weren't able to attend, I have to tell you, it really was an incredible event. Let me start with who I'm going to thank. The Recreation Committee, Catherine Steinel, Lizette, Richard, Paul Duffy, Maribel Liberty, Joe Liberty, their son Joey Liberty, I mean, DPW staff was incredible. Lieutenant Hill was there. This was a true representation of teamwork, working together, and doing a phenomenal job for this town. I have never seen so many children having a great time at an event. I didn't even know that we had that many children in this town. They were on the, we tried an ice rink, which was, they come, they set at about one-thirty in the afternoon. It's not real ice, they're actually, it's like we have the material from cutting boards that you use, and they put them together as tiles, and they rope it off just like a regular ice skating rink, but it's not, and it, but it looks, it looks the part, and they came equipped with the skates and all, and the music, it was, it was really, it was incredible. We had hot cocoa, we had pretzels on the barbecue grill, we had cotton candy. We had a horse and carriage ride that was unbelievable. The horses' names were Scotty and Eli, they weighed two thousand pounds apiece, I got all the trivia on the Budweiser horses, what are they called?
Clydesdale.
Clydesdales. It was gorgeous. The kids just had so much fun, and we had Santa, we set up a special area for photo, photos with Santa, and it was really great. Councilwoman, as for the notification, the December eighth date was on the calendar that you got ten months ago. So when you get the next, no, I'm telling you this in an effort to try and help. The date was scheduled back, that is the same date, we're going to try and send extra reminders out, but it's your obligation, when you get that calendar, to mark your calendar immediately when you get it.
I guess my question is, why didn't I get a reminder or announcement that the residents got?
According to Catherine, and she checked the distribution list, she said that it was sent out, and that most people, I was the only one that opened the email, actually.
Can I suggest we just have all the council members added to our constant contact?
If I may finish you.
Okay.
What we did was, with Richard, we set a specific group up with all council members to send you the emails, but you do need, you have to open your emails, because if you don't open the email, you don't know what it says inside. So, okay.
All right, so here's what I'm going to say, I'm going to call everybody from now on, okay? Everybody on council, I'm going to call you to make sure that you know that we're having an event, okay?
Well, I do, Mayor, respectfully, I know, but I make the announcements, just like, and I'm not, I'm just saying, we had Veterans Day, I announced that there was Veterans Day, and there were only three of us that showed up for Veterans Day. So I make the announcements at the council meetings for the events, and please, just, you know, if there's any questions, just call me, you know, I appreciate that you came, that was wonderful, I really did appreciate that, and I appreciate that you, I know Ed came and offered to do the hats with the kids, the glitter, I know, Ellen, you weren't feeling well, and I still appreciate that you showed up. And going forward, I don't know how we're going to improve this one, but we're going to have to do something for the following year. Other than that, girls' basketball and boys' basketball is starting, and that's it for the activities. You will be getting a new calendar in January with all the activities for the year, Mayor. We're doing that right now.
Councilwoman Park?
Yes, Plenum Board, noon meeting after last minute, three forty, because that time is, the date is changed.
Okay.
Yeah, the Public Safety, the mayor announced earlier, the delivery of the fire truck tomorrow morning at ten thirty. I'm looking forward to seeing that. Unfortunately, too cold for a letdown. You know, congratulations to the committee, Carol, and the entire team, was that Catherine, I heard, I apologize for not being able to make it, for traveling for work, but my family told me it was an incredible event for the tree lighting. Hope we can just continue to keep building and making the event better year by year and learning from the previous year. Thanks.
I have one additional comment. During the caucus meeting, I appointed an ad hoc committee consisting of Councilwoman Wu, Councilwoman McMorro, Councilwoman Park, to undertake an internal study of what should be done with Witty Field. Separately, I reached out to our engineers and asked them to break down the last project that we were contemplating into four separate projects with four separate pricings. And so I'll have those for your committee as well, and you could review that.